Welcome, everyone. I call the September 2nd City Council meeting to order. This meeting is being held a day later than normal due to the Labor Day holiday. As a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings and both staff members and staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We start off this evening with some special business, and I'm going to move over to the podium for it. This is ID 1852, East Side Welcoming League Proclamation. Are we going to switch this one? Okay, push it. So, we are going to push this one down, go further down the agenda this evening to allow Nahid some time to get here. He's the one receiving the proclamation. We'll move to ID 1914, Washington City County Management Association Invitations and Innovations in General Government. Head of City Administrator Bob Kowitsch, welcome to the lecture.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Two weeks ago, the Washington City County Managers Association had their annual meeting in Walla Walla. As part of that meeting, they had an awards dinner, and I am pleased to report that the city of Issaquah was a big winner at this statewide event. First, we had one of our employees, Dale Markey Crimp, receive the Outstanding Municipal Assistant of the Year in the state of Washington. And so unfortunately, she was not able to attend as she continues on her family leave, but we will be getting that plaque to her. So that is a great honor given to the most outstanding municipal assistant in the state of Washington. So we're very pleased with that. Another award that was received by the city of Issaquah, which is why I'm here this evening, is their annual award for innovations in local government. This is a single award that is given to one jurisdiction every year in the state of Washington for innovative programs, and the city of Issaquah received that for its data and performance management system. And so I'd like to read to you the words that were read at the event in Walla Walla. "The city of Issaquah's data and performance management system is nationally recognized for its rigor, transparency, and effectiveness. In 2021, the city began a comprehensive data reporting system organized into public dashboards. The dashboards cover topics ranging from progress on the city's climate action plan to homeless outreach efforts to overall performance on the city's strategic plan. These dashboards tell the story to the public and elected officials about progress on community developed plans and effectiveness of programs. The system has improved the service the city can provide to its residents, as exemplified by the homeless outreach dashboard. By collecting information beginning in 2022 on connections to shelter, permanent housing, and other services, the city's behavioral health team was able to demonstrate that the problem of homelessness was much more prevalent in Issaquah than previously considered and that emergency shelter was critically needed. This data prompted the team to pursue a partnership with a local hotel to provide emergency shelter and allow them to track this program if this program was successful. Due to trends revealed by the data and the adjustments to the emergency shelter program, the team was able to make 300 critical connections to emergency shelter through the hotel partnership. These tangible benefits of the community are replicated in the police, arts, and economic development sectors, as well allowing staff to make data-informed decisions to benefit the public. For example, the city partnered with local businesses to collect data and reduce retail crime, with thefts reduced by 26% in 2023. In addition to programmatic changes, this information has been invaluable throughout the city's budget processes, helping staff determine what programs should receive the limited funds based on impacts to the community. This work is not undertaken alone, rather the city created Data Qua, a data training program that all new hires get exposed to through onboarding, and that power users benefit from tier training to grow their data collection, analysis, and visualization skills. By dispersing these talents throughout the organization ensures that the formalized dashboard process can be continued despite staff turnover and invites staff to use the data in other ways throughout the course of their job. Given its effectiveness, transparency to the community, and integration throughout the organization, the city's data and performance management system was awarded Bloomberg Philanthropies What's Work City Certification in 2023. This certification is the leading standard for excellence in data usage for local governments, and Issaquah is the only city in the United States with a population under 50,000 to earn this certification, and only the third city in Washington State to do so. The city's intentional and effective program can be a model to other governments who want to use data to enhance transparency, identify issues, and make more impactful decisions." It is deserving, the city is deserving of this recognition through the Innovations in Local Government Award due to its impact in the community and to demonstrate that cities of all sizes can meaningfully engage in the best practice of local government in the modern age. So, very proud to have been recognized among our peers in Walla Walla, and I wanted to take a moment to bring you this plaque. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we will proudly display it at City Hall.
Nice. Thank you, City Administrator. Thank you very much. The next item under Special Business is ID 1916. This is an informational update from our Parks and Community Services Department of our summer highlights, and I'd like to invite Director Jeff Watling to the podium. Jeff?
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council. So, so happy to be here. Thank you, Clerk Giezer, for sharing the screen and showing the presentation. Very much appreciate that. Well, much like City Administrator Bob Kowitsch just mentioning that award and the homeless outreach dashboard, in all of Parks and Community Services, as a team, as a staff, we often talk about getting beyond the face of the program. So I'm going to share with you a lot of fun, a lot of games, a lot of amazing things that happened as we served thousands, literally thousands, of people in this community, but know this, as a very dedicated team of professionals, we go beyond, we realize that program, that public space, that service is merely a vehicle. It's a conduit for so much more. So, you all know this, I'm saying this to many, maybe in the viewing audience, as you think of some of our major city goals, environmental goals, economic goals, public safety goals, addressing loneliness, so many things, we recognize, and I hope you see, as I mentioned some of the data in these highlights, the return, the community return on these investments goes really, really deep. So with that, thank you. Next slide, Tisha. I'm going to go division by division and try and, again, provide some highlights of what happened this spring and summer. First, starting with Park Planning and Development Division, very, very busy season and summer. Thank you, you know, in May, we celebrated a ribbon cutting with the neighborhood up at Hillside Park with the completion of the park and the mitigation area. I'm happy to report the neighborhood is just loving their first summer in that new, with those new park improvements in that very, very special park. Pedestrian Park and Senior Center Plazas, as you know, right behind us, I'm pointing or over across the street, maybe not right behind us, those were just recently completed, very, very complex project. Hats off to our Park Planning and Development Manager and Project Manager on that, Robin Spear. When you do a project like that in a pretty intense urban space over an old spur rail line, there's a lot of things you'll discover along the way, and she and the contractor did some amazing work. We look forward to a ribbon cutting with the community on September 15th, but early returns show the community is really loving those new plazas. We haven't stopped on the acquisition front. You know, earlier this year, thank you, you approved a purchase and sale agreement for 17 acres on Squawk Mountain, known as Kilkari Phase III. That adjoins the 20 acres we just recently purchased, giving us eventually, hopefully, a 37-acre corridor from the valley floor up to Squawk Mountain State Park. Happy to report, if you recall, we delayed the close of that until Q1 of next year so that we could go seek some grant funding. We were successful. We submitted an application, just received news from King County Conservation Futures, we're going to receive a little over $2 million for that $2.5 million acquisition. So that will go, again, a long, long ways. Thank you for your commitment to allowing us to have some funding to seek these acquisitions. It allows us to not only make these acquisitions happen, but then leverage that funds, that funding with other grant dollars. So, great news there. More to come this fall as we clean up title and do some work to prepare closing. We'll have a much better idea of when we might be able to close on that. Ideally, we might be able to close on that before the end of this year. Not to be forgotten, the dog park by the community center, the Rainier Trail Dog Park is projected to be out to bid here in September, a bid award scheduled to come to you in October, so we can construct that in November. Next slide. Moving on to our Park Operations Team, a little bit of the numbers, hard to kind of get our arms around sometimes, the size and scale of what it is that they steward for the community, 53 acres of turf that they mow, over seven acres of landscaping beds that they take care of, literally a ton of trash, 13,000 bags of trash. Important data point, when you think about it, in terms of, trash means the parks are being used, so we see that as a really good thing. Lots of doggy bags are being used throughout our system, which is great. Just over 250 picnic shelter rentals throughout our park system that the Park Operations Team supported, along with their just day-to-day maintenance. And I want to point out, along with some of the hard budget decisions that had to be made last fall, a bomb cyclone in November set that team back. Often, what you're doing in the winter and spring is preparing for summer. That prep was short-changed a little bit, and so you had a Park Operations Team working really, really hard to get our parks into the great space that they are for the summer. Some projects that they've been working on, thank you again for your work and our partnership, our 18-month partnership with Lakes and Amish State Park. The team is now beginning to put together an operations plan. We already have rentals and a schedule lined up just later this week, and into next week, we're going to be installing two cricket pitches in partnership with state parks there. So that is ready to roll. Some tree replacement projects, again, due to the bomb cyclone, and also just implementing our urban forest management plan, some drainage improvements, some maintenance work we did at the Community Center Lawn. You may have noticed, if you went to the concerts, that front of the lawn gets pretty mushy. Wasn't so mushy this year. It held up extremely well, so great work by the team there. And then just annual work that we do on play areas is really, really important. Next slide. Also within our Park Operations Team, Green Issaquah and the Park Ranger Program, really continuing to build on such a rich history, decades of history of volunteerism in this community. Both of these programs continue to expand their reach into the community. Some highlights, I mentioned earlier, beginning to implement the Urban Forest Management Plan. Our Park Ranger had 70 enforcement or education contacts throughout our park system just this summer alone, the last 10 weeks of summer. Often, this is anything from dogs off leash to other unsanctioned recreation activities that people need to be either educated on or given reminders of. A number of outreach events that both Taylor, our Green Issaquah Volunteer Coordinator, and Alex, our Park Ranger, took part in. We did something fun this summer. We did a coexistence day at the farmer's market. Hundreds of individuals, of shoppers, came over and took part in that educational forum. 13 agencies partnered with us in that, really, really good feedback, and something we want to continue to do on an annual basis. And just, again, increased engagement with schools, community organizations, businesses, continuing to want to step up and support the management stewardship of our open space and forest. Next slide. Pivoting a little bit over to our Community Services side of the house, Human Services continues to do amazing work. This year alone, we have seven individuals who have been transitioned to housing here in 2025. 72 unduplicated referrals from IPD. That is such an integral partnership. Those referrals are really based on an individual who finds themselves in crisis that needs behavioral health support. Many of those involve a co-response, well, we'll go with PD, but what's really, really important in the work of Brenda, she's here in the audience, in the Behavioral Health Team, the follow-up that's done on those 72 individuals. That's not a one-hour conversation, that's weeks, months of work to help to understand and get that person into a place where they're ready to consider moving forward. And that really spans the spectrum of those 72 individuals. Many of them are housed, some are unhoused. Another great point, earlier this spring, and as we've done work this summer, we're now an approved partner with Coordinated Entry. Coordinated Entry is a really, really important tool for helping individuals find housing, so we're now plugged into that, confirming with Brenda, that's a daily, that's a daily resource that we use to get, again, people connected to services. Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month took place this summer, great turnout there. Community Clothing Closet, you may recall this, this was late spring, a partnership between Human Services and our Pickering Barn staff and Community Group. We hosted a clothing closet at the barn. Over 500 visitors came and got clothing. You would not believe that the amount of clothing donations that this community rallied and provided, it was a, it was a great, great event. Coming is Friday, September 5th, Culture Fest at the Community Center Lawn with that great turf. Hope you come, it'll be a great event. Pivoting a little bit over to our Arts Group, Arts Team, Amy Dukes and the Arts Commission. Those of you that maybe saw the Chalk Art Festival, which is a really rich tradition here in the community, we expanded on it. We twisted it up a little bit, added some onsite entertainment, some live music. Over 450 people came and enjoyed that event. The Community Center Lawn was, again, used in a great community way. Shakespeare in the Park took place also on the Community Center Lawn, over 300 attended that event. The Issaquah Film Festival, I know a number of you have already commented when that happened, what a great success story, both by Amy, the Arts Commission, the Issaquah Arts Group, but I also want to mention the three alumni, the three Issaquah High School students who have graduated, who have really come back and wanted to do this within their community is incredibly meaningful and incredibly impactful, and to see what that's become just in two years is fantastic. Also, a big thanks to Issaquah School District. You all know, it's been a goal of ours and yours to see if we can get more community use of the Issaquah Performing Arts Center. I find it somewhat poetic, the first real community use of that space was the Film Festival and was a really big success. So really, really important that we want to continue to cultivate trust in that relationship with school district staff. Public art installation took place. If you've walked through the pedestrian plaza, Issaquah resident, longtime Issaquah resident, June Sekaguchi, created that art, wonderful art piece. Those blooms are blooms that you would see off of a cedar tree, if you're curious. So it's really paying homage to the cedar tree, and look forward to seeing how the community enjoys that new art. And then coming soon, in collaboration with our partners in Public Works, we're going to be, you'll be seeing a new asphalt mural taking place, and as well as new crossings within the rideaway at the Three Trails location, this is on Gilman Boulevard. This is a really, really important trail connectivity for the East Lakes and Amish Trail, the Rainier Trail, and the Juniper Trail, where they all come together. And so, using art, art with a purpose, to really celebrate that space, make it safer for pedestrians as well, look for that to roll out this fall. Now switching over a couple slides with our Recreation Divisions, a team that's really, really been hard at work, really looking at how we deliver services, deliver programs, and continuing to adapt to what the community needs. Summer camps, an amazingly successful late weeks. Again, as we looked at a slight decrease in resources, we got really, really creative as a team and actually created capacity, additional capacity within our camps, and really looking at the age groups that were most in need. And so with that added capacity, we saw 1,200 registrations in our day camps alone. That's our city-run day camp, so that's Kinder Camp, Camp Qua, and Adventure Camp, saw 1,200 participants. Those camps employed 39 teens and young adults to make those camps happen. You'll see this as a little thread, I'll say this with a couple of other Recreation Divisions, teen employment is a program. Teen employment is something we take very, very seriously, and though they are helping us deliver programs, we are offering this community that opportunity. We think it's really, really important to be a first-time employer for teens. They're going to turn pro in something else, but we're teaching them leadership and so many other qualities.
Jeff, how much more do you have in your presentation?
Six more minutes.
Oh, six more minutes? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I had a question about the registration, the system that we changed a little bit so that city residents could register first and then open it up to the general public. How was that received, and what were the results that you saw in the program?
Great question, great question. Very well received amongst Issaquah residents, harder received amongst non-residents. With the increased capacity this year, we instituted that last year, if you recall, was the first year we instituted, and we still had a pretty long waitlist. This year, we're happy to say, giving residents that priority allowed them to register. We still had capacity when non-residents were able to register, so it certainly went better this year, but those camps do continue to hold a waitlist. But residents were appreciative and understanding that they were given a priority. Yep. All right, moving right along, there are other camps. Along with our day camps, we contract with many, many providers. We offer what we call STEAM camps, so think of STEM plus arts, STEAM, so a variety of contracted camps as well as sports camps. Another nearly 1,000 youngsters registered in those programs as well. Next slide. Summer events, again, saw great impact and benefit to the community. Our ISE Kids Triathlon was back, this is something we partner with the Youth Advisory Board. We saw record registration this year, over 250 youngsters coming to swim, bike, and run in that great event. The Down Home Fourth of July, a great interdepartmental partnership to provide both the parade and the community picnic, extremely well received by Issaquah residents. And then Concerts on the Green. Hard to believe that we continue to see uptick in participation and attendance, but we averaged over 1,000 individuals. The Community Center Lawn was literally busting at the seams. My gauge is often Harvey Manning, the Harvey statue. There's many people now sitting at Harvey and sort of on the other side of Bush, so a great, great popular concert series. Thank you not only to Kiwanis for that continued partnership. Rotary stepped up and partnered with us at the event and took food donations, which was a big success as well. So, great, great community event. Real quickly with Adaptive Recreation, thank you to you. Post-COVID, we brought back our Adaptive Recreation Program, if you remember, with a staff person. Callie Weber is fantastic to have that dedicated staff person. She is doing really, really impactful, meaningful work, and partnering with Leo, offering After Hours Club at the Senior Center. Special Olympics was really struggling and didn't offer softball. We took that on and had softball for 30 individuals. This is incredibly meaningful work, looking at how we can not just do separate programs, but incorporate our adaptive participants into programs that we're doing. Those of you that came to the concerts know that we partnered with Tavion, we had 30 to 50 of our adaptive clients and customers there enjoying the concerts and being part of community, and that's really, really meaningful for us. That's where and how community happens. Next slide, the Senior Center, continued work and growth there. Trips continue to be immensely popular. We seem to not be able to offer enough trips for the community. 111 new members. I caution the word member, I know it says members there. We are not an exclusive senior center, we're an immensely inclusive senior center, and so 111, we do ask anyone who comes to the senior center to get a card so we know who they are, know that if and when they check in, but to see that, that increase in participation even throughout the summer is really, really meaningful. Kirsten and the Senior Center team have really made that such an inclusive space, that we're seeing multicultural seniors, activities happening there on site. We're now offering Veterans Breakfast once a month, that's certainly seen to be very, very popular as well. Next slide. Not to be outdone, I'm trying to be quick here. Our Athletics Team saw great, great things happen this summer as well. Our Gliders Track and Field Program, you might recall, we started this about five or six years ago. We offer a spring and summer sort of track-focused program, and then in the fall, we offer cross-country. We saw 580 registrations, that's the most we've ever seen so far this year. So certainly a program that's continuing to see growth and impact in the community. We're another teen employer through our athletics programs, with 70-plus teens employed to make gliders and those other programs happen, offering some new programming at the Community Center and other spaces. Our Athletics Team also manages all of our scheduled athletic field use for very large tournaments this year, bit of an economic incubator there, as well as certainly other benefits. So a lot of use of our two athletic complexes, Tibbetts Valley Park and Central Park. Next slide. The pool, continuing to be bursting at the seams as well, over 1,000 people taught in swim lessons. That brings our total to over 3,100 individuals taught and gone through our lessons program this year. Water polo's been introduced, we have 41 participants now in water polo classes, that was just introduced last year. The underwater egg hunt is still a hit. Lifeguard training is something we do not only for our own employees, but we do lifeguard training for some of the beach programs that other cities do, so seeing training 33 lifeguards there. We have implemented a new junior lifeguard program. We had 10 individuals go through our junior lifeguard program. Again, a great way to learn leadership. We love to be considered a future employer for these junior lifeguards, but great, great work that Zach and the pool team are doing. And again, we're a teen employer at the pool. 85-plus teens employed to help make our pool happen. So when you even just look at those three examples, we are employing 250, almost 300 teens to make these, to deliver these programs and services. So when I say it's a program in itself, it really is a program in itself. Next slide. Last, but certainly not least, the Pickering Barn, an amazing, amazing summer there. 72,000 shoppers to date for the farmer's market, $1.6 million in vendor sales year-to-date. Hard to believe, but the record we broke last, in 2024, we're 5% ahead of that. This market continues to be an amazing, amazing place, and is really, I think, becoming the premier market on the east side in many ways. EBT SNAP program, we're seeing increased numbers there. From 2024, we introduced it, we're going to have to pay attention with new federal rules and reductions. EBT SNAP's going to look very, very different next year, if at all, so we'll, I think, need to get creative and think how we still might want to provide access to healthy provide access to healthy food for all residents, if that's something we want to consider. The Homegrown Program that we partnered with Economic Development has been certainly a huge success as well. On the event side of the barn, we've hosted a sustainable wedding show. It's really, we think it positions us well with the barn and what our ethos is as a city. We've gotten a lot of use out of that. And then lastly, a great example of how the barn has really transitioned from being just an event space to really a community hall. Rock and Roll Rink, our economic incubator with a young budding roller skating company has certainly seen a lot of initial success as it's rolling out and will continue to happen this fall. Look during Boo at the Barn Weekend, the roller skating is going to be part of that, part of that program. So great work by Kellie Dayan and the team down there. Last slide. Really just to say thank you, it's through an amazing team of dedicated staff, an amazing number of community partners, your support, council and mayor, that we're investing in people, we're investing in our residents, we're investing in public spaces, and great things are, continue to happen here in Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Watling. Council questions. Deputy Council President.
Yeah, just a comment. Well, first of all, the depth and breadth of the things that you do is just amazing. And the fact that you could cover all of those things is incredible. I thought for a minute there that you were going to forget to talk about the roller rink because that was going to be my question. I ran into the roller rink people this past weekend and they echoed what I know personally because of my dealings with the Parks and Rec staff, which is the comment that I hear all the time. And that is that the staff is so wonderful to work with. They are open to new ideas. I mean, who could imagine someone walking in the door and saying, "We'd like to have a roller rink at Pickering Barn," and somebody approving it. So, and then it is a big success. So, yeah, so they were complimentary, but I'm also personally very complimentary. You have a wonderful staff. Please extend our thanks to them for all the work that they do. It really makes living in Issaquah such an enjoyable experience for so, so many people. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, they're not my staff. They're your staff, really, this community staff. But thank you so much. You're an amazing, amazing team.
Any other comments or questions? Councilman Joe?
Director, could you comment on the success or what we saw from the Homegrown Program this year? I really enjoyed having different new vendors in there. There was a bean vendor from the east of the mountains that was there. I had a great time striking up a conversation with him and bought some beans for my emergency kit. But if you can comment on the other successes that might have been there over the summer with the Homegrown Program?
Yeah, not a lot of specifics. I know there have been eight so far. And it's been so very well, much appreciated for these new businesses that haven't had a lot of community spotlight, to have a platform where you know you're going to get 5,000 shoppers in a five-hour span at farmer's market. They've just are immensely excited. So I know Kellie Dayan and Jack will have a much more thorough report that they'll be providing later, later this fall.
Comments and questions? Councilmember Jiang?
Not to pile on too much to this roller rink thing, but obviously, you know, I've been there. I love it. And I was talking to the folks there and they mentioned that they're searching for a more permanent location. So I'm curious, like, is that something where are we trying to, you know, get them to stay in Issaquah? You know, because they're generally like looking all over the east side. I know just some history, so I actually know those people because I grew up skating at Skate King in Bellevue. And that became a Harley-Davidson. And at the time, they're like, oh, can Bellevue Parks and Rec take this over and make it like a city, you know, facility? And that didn't end up happening. So I'm curious, you know, if we've given that any type of thought.
Yeah, great connection. I would say yes, we think there's great value in relationships. And let's establish a relationship with this business and let's do everything we can and partnering with Economic Development when the time comes. I know they have a financial goal. I'm not sure the timing of their financial goal, but as they begin to look for that permanent location, we would love to have a great relationship with them and see if that is something that they're interested in locating here.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Director Watling, thank you for the report. And as you already heard, so much good information and also hearing about expanding programs. We just have not been able to do that for such a long period of time. I'm so excited that we are now showing work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to move us back to the first special business item. ID 1852, East Side Welcoming Week proclamation. I'm going to invite Brenda to the lectern since Nahid will not be able to make it tonight. Brenda. And I'll start off with an invitation. If you have not been to this event, it's one of my favorite ones in Issaquah. I was not born in the U.S. I am an immigrant to this country. I have learned a lot in my three decades here, but I get no more joy than watching others who have arrived and are trying to figure out what it is to be in this country. I couldn't even understand the school supply list the first year we were here. We don't call things the same things at all. So this is a real, real joyous event. I'm a staff and the community does a wonderful job putting it on. Whereas Welcoming Week has been celebrated in solidarity on the east side since 2016 with the cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Samamish, seeing this as an opportunity to honor the history, achievements, experiences, struggles, and contributions of immigrant and refugee people to the social, economic, educational, artistic, and civic life of our country. And whereas we recognize that many immigrants and refugees continue to face systemic barriers, shifting policies, and discrimination, and we commit to fostering a community where all community members can feel safe, supported, and fully included. And whereas East King County is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse regions in Washington State, with 37% of our residents coming from places outside of the United States and 40% of residents speaking a language other than English at home. And whereas immigrant and refugee community members have historically faced significant challenges in building a new life in the United States, often navigating limited resources and systemic barriers along the way. And whereas immigrant and refugee community members are especially impacted by the current federal regulatory environment, facing fear, harassment, uncertainty, and trauma regardless of their legal status. Whereas federal policy changes are also affecting many human services programs, limiting vital resources to immigrant and refugee community members and many other people in need, impacting their education, employment, income, food supply, housing, and well-being. And whereas it is important to counter many of the negative stereotypes regarding the contributions of immigrants and highlight that 36% of new businesses are immigrant-owned, that American agriculture relies heavily on immigrant labor, and that undocumented immigrants paid over $96 billion in federal, state, and local taxes in 2022 alone. Whereas despite the ongoing challenges, East Side Welcoming Week will continue as part of the region's annual celebration, honoring the contributions of immigrants and refugees, and highlighting the vital role communities play in fostering equity, inclusion, belonging, and a sense of welcoming. And whereas there are many ways to celebrate East Side Welcoming Week, including amplifying the voices and experience of immigrant people, uplifting them to share their stories, or attending Welcoming Week events, visit East Side for All for a list of the regional events. Now therefore, we, the mayors of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Samamish, who couldn't all be here tonight, Washington jointly proclaim September 12 through 21st, 2025, as East Side Welcoming Week. We invite the community to engage in opportunities during East Side Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, and take joint action to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community. And did you want to say anything?
Just really excited about Friday at 5:30 to, this will be my very first event, but I've heard so much about it and I'm thrilled to be here to accept this and I appreciate all of your support here and members of the council.
Thank you so much. Do you want to take a picture with us?
Absolutely.
Nah, thank you. It's as funny as you're still unmuted. Okay, Audience Comments is the next part of our meeting this evening. And members of the public may address the council at this time, either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing that portion of the meeting. City Clerk, have we had anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicate a desire to speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So for those making comments, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while it's not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. If you are virtual, when you are recognized, please unmute your microphone. If you're in the room, please step up to the lectern in the center of the room and press the microphone button on the base to be heard by your council. State your name and address or relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal tax, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments written in verbal or important aspect of the public process and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, could you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Corby Kessler. Corby, I'm making you a panelist now. You should be able to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. Corby, in case you're having issues unmuting, I'm going to put a request in that you unmute. Here we go.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Corby. Thank you.
Good. Can you see me?
Nope.
Well, you'll have to just imagine me. I'm sorry about that. I'm Corby Kessler. I'm the director of communications and marketing for the Downtown Issaquah Association. It's nice to be with you all. It was wonderful hearing from the Parks Department about all the great things going on in the summer. That's what I wanted to cover today with Dia. We're concluding a summer just filled with economic impact activities that have delighted our visitors and locals in the form of art walks and music strolls, wine and art walks, the 11th Annual Gas Station Blues, and just this last Sunday, we had the Confluence Music Festival. All have brought thousands of folks to ignite vitality in our downtown. Our research shows us that one quarter of attendees at our events come from outside of town. So we like to show off our town to the outsiders and make people feel at home if they're residents. So either way, we'll take them. We love the pedestrian traffic. That really helps our businesses. Art is the means by which we bring those programs to life. And of course, it helps shine the light of our designation as a creative district. And we couldn't do any of this without the city's support through the Arts Commission. So very profound thank you to all of you for your support. We plan to conclude the summer with this much anticipated wine and art walk this Friday, September 5. It does coincide with Culture Fest, but the timing is a little bit different. So I think you can do both, but please join us. We've got 16 Washington wineries, art by 17 artisans, and music by local solists and bands. We even have Beecher's Cheese and Cheese Land there to do some pairing. So you won't even have to worry about dinner. But it's a great time. It's from 6 to 9. You could go to Culture Fest and then come and go back and forth. Either way, we would love to have you. I just hope you have been able to enjoy some of the programming because we've brought a lot of life to downtown, a lot of sustainability, and just people wanting to come back again and again. So thank you for everything that you've done to support us. We're looking forward to working with you on activating Pedestrian Park. Congratulations to everybody in the Parks Department for such a beautiful park. And it's going to be really fun to bring that to life as well. So thank you very much and hope to see you by Friday.
Thank you, Corby. And City Clerk?
Do we have someone else on the list or online?
We don't have anyone else on the list. We do have a few others with us virtually, but I'm not seeing them indicate a desire to speak.
And we do have folks in the room. So if you would like to speak at this point in time, could you raise your hand? We'll call you up to the podium. No hands going up. Okay. Back to more. Well, thanks to Corby for coming in and giving us an update on Dia's summer activities and what's going through to the fall. As a reminder, you can always provide written comments to your city council at thecitycouncil@issaquahwa.gov email address. We're going to move to the next item of business, which is our consent calendar. And I do not have any remarks on any consent calendar items. Are there any committee chairs or chair designates who would like to report on any of the items? I am seeing head shakes. No. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing an indication of that. And would somebody be prepared to make a motion? Council President?
Yes, I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second?
All those in favor, are there any, nope, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, 7-0 unanimously. We're going to move into regular business and we're going to start with AB 9056, Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center Acquisition. And I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. And tonight, we want to talk about the Opportunity Center. And specifically, the issue before us tonight is we're looking for direction on whether or not the city should proceed with the acquisition process for that 10,000-square-foot condominium that we call the Opportunity Center within the Transit Oriented Development. We're coming before you tonight with this issue because King County Housing Authority, our development partners, are about to apply for building permits for that development. And so this is kind of a critical point in the timeline where we want to make sure that, given changing conditions, that we're being thoughtful about how we proceed in order to stay being good partners with KCHA. So specifically, the direction needed tonight is should the city proceed with the acquisition and building of the Opportunity Center, that process, without currently identifying tenant or service provider? Or should the city modify our internal agreement with KCHA and remove the requirement to provide the Opportunity Center? We'll talk more about that. At this point, the administration recommends moving forward with the acquisition process for the Opportunity Center while we undergo recruiting for the tenants and human service providers. A little bit of background, the city, as you know, has a lot of years of history with this project. So we'll just cover 2025 tonight. The Health Point and Valley Cities were the human service providers that the city had selected and had been partnering with since almost the inception of this project. In spring of 2025, these human services providers notified us that they would no longer be able to partner with us on this project. And so they pulled out of the partnership, which means that we have no current tenants for this 10,000-square-foot space. Since then, the administration has been surveying other types of service providers that are similar to Health Point and Valley Cities to see what interest may be from other similar service providers, seeking really one tenant for that 10,000-square-feet of space to provide behavioral health services, medical and dental services for low-income populations. We have found that there is some interest in other service providers. We have found that there is some interest in other service providers. So we are aware and in contact with a couple of other service providers that are very interested in locating in ISACOAS. So it seems really promising that we could find a tenant to replace Health Point and Valley Cities. And we have also been looking at the possibility, if we don't have a tenant identified, given the timeline for this project and the timeline for construction of the TOD and the Opportunity Center, what's our ability to use funds? And so we've been looking at the Affordable Housing Sales Tax Funds and the state grant that we've received just to make sure what our risks are. And we'll talk about those later in the presentation today. And also, as part of background, we have talked with the Safety Services and Parks Committee. We'll be reviewing their feedback tonight on what our options are moving forward. So while we have been identifying a couple of other options for human services providers in the Opportunity Center, we also wanted to have a discussion with the Safety Services and Parks Committee and seek their guidance if we cannot find that one tenant to replace Health Point and Valley Cities. And on the July 22 meeting with that committee, they recommended their preferred alternative, which is to pursue a variety of smaller service providers to help share that space. And it could mean rotating service providers, but it wouldn't be that single one tenant to take over the space. And that was their recommended option. We reviewed some other options, like using the space for transitional housing. And we also talked about the possibility of building the Opportunity Center without having identified a service provider. Maybe we hold out for that one tenant if we cannot find one this year. And finally, another option we discussed was pulling out of the agreement with KCHA for that Opportunity Center space. So as I said, the committee expressed a preference for the option highlighted here, Option 1, as our kind of Plan B for the Opportunity Center. And also expressed some concerns over the risk of having a vacant space. Since we don't have a tenant identified right now, what is the risk of proceeding at this point? And we'll go over that. So we looked at a couple of different risks. This is if the city kind of pulled out of that agreement to do the Opportunity Center within the TOD. What would likely happen is that KCHA would retain ownership of that 10,000-square-foot condominium. They would redesign the pace for live-work lofts and perhaps other resident amenities as well. What this would mean at this point in the process, or if they were to proceed and get building permits, there would likely be costs associated with this redesign and having to reapply for building permits. That's why we're asking for council direction tonight, is in order to be a good partner with KCHA to provide as much early direction to them as we can. Other risks associated with pulling out of the Opportunity Center is a loss of space for human services and especially close to transit. It would be hard to find another space that's like it or similar to that, certainly within the city of ISACOAS limits. But certainly, we can search for other spaces, and we can find other spaces if that's the direction of council at a future date. It would mean we would delay the opening of a human services center like the Opportunity Center. Financial risks of pulling out of the agreement. If we don't have an Opportunity Center, if we're not going to be contributing to that, then we would likely forfeit the state funds. Even if we tried to seek a space within another development or a different type of space, those state funds are really tied to this project and this location for it to be transit-oriented. And we have looked at other spaces that are within walking distance of transit, and there's just not very many of them. So it would be likely that we would have to forfeit that $3 million of state funds if we were to pull out of the agreement at this time and look for space in another location. We also looked at the financial risks of building the Opportunity Center without a tenant, since while we feel like it is promising and we have some good leads on tenants, we don't currently have one right now. So looking at the financial risks, we talked to various departments within the state to understand what are some of the strings attached to the state grant that we have received. If we do not have a tenant, then we would likely not use that $3 million of funding to help pay for the construction costs. We would likely rely more on the Affordable Housing Sales Tax that the city controls. And as we look at the Affordable Housing Sales Tax, it is a great source of funding for this. And we could still use those funds to build the Opportunity Center. What we would need to do likely, just to mitigate some of the risks, is to make sure that we're dedicating that space for the intended use, that we don't use Affordable Housing Sales Tax dollars, and then turn around and open up some type of commercial business or something that's not related to the funding that we're using. Other risks associated of building the Opportunity Center without a tenant include service risks. So not just financial, but if the Opportunity Center remains vacant, then what do we do to the space to still be able to provide some human services or use the space for a human services purpose? And one of the things that we could do is we could house our Human Services Division in the space to provide some services. And we would still continue to seek tenants for that space. As part of examining risks, we also talked with a number of other centers that are a lot like our vision for Opportunity Centers. So we talked to the Together Center and two other centers as well, one in Skyway and a new one that's opening up, the Sunshine Center. And more information is available in the packets on this. But basically, what we've heard from them is the need to be creative and flexible with those tenants and how we use that space, how we build that space, that the tenants really rely on below-market rental rates. So we would like to cover cities' costs of maintenance and operating of the facility, but that doesn't necessarily mean market rental rates. So it would be submarket, but still covering city costs. And also, we heard from some of these other organizations that finding a lot of service providers, especially under a multi-tenant model, securing leases, et cetera, is really one FTE. And while that's the case for these other centers, we have a different model here, which is something that the city is much more involved in. And at this point in time, we believe that between our Human Services Division staff and between our facilities staff, we have the staffing capabilities to be able to find tenants, to secure leases, and to manage the space within the staff that we have. So at this point, we don't anticipate needing to hire an additional FTE if we were to move forward. We would just need to look at work plans, reprioritize. And some of those work plans might change depending on the need to really manage the space and manage the tenants. So at the July 29 Safety Services and Parks Committee meeting, we had additional feedback after going over some of those risks. The feedback we received first was unanimous recommendation to pursue the acquisition process of the Opportunity Center. We also heard continued support for the Opportunity Center concept as we've been discussing over these years. And also, the committee requested additional information on the cost estimate for the Opportunity Center to really assess whether this location and investing in this location makes sense cost-wise compared to other options. And so we'd like to present that information to you tonight. What we were able to do since our last week's meeting is look at other properties within the east side that are for sale and look at those prices per square foot. The properties that we found that were listed for sale that were also within a quarter mile of transit. So trying to, excuse me, compare apples to apples when it comes to the Opportunity Center space. What we were finding is that across the east side, properties are going for sale for $478 to $627 per square foot. By comparison, the Opportunity Center cost is $604 per square foot. So it's within that range. The other thing that I would note here as we're trying to compare apples to apples is that the properties that we found for sale in other places of the east side were not Class A or new construction. They were Class C and Class B buildings, which would likely need a lot of tenant improvement upgrades as well. And those buildings too, of course, range in the number of square feet they are. So we're looking at an Opportunity Center that's 10,000 square feet within an affordable housing development that's right next to transit. There's really nothing comparable to that, but just trying to compare costs of acquisition. And the Opportunity Center is within the range that's in the market on the east side today. And then as we look at what constitutes this price per square foot for the Opportunity Center, that information is here on that slide. We see this number here for acquisition, and that really covers the acquisition of the land and the portion of the land that the square feet really occupy. Since KCHA had to purchase that property, that's really the portion of the land acquisition cost. And I don't believe we went over that at the committee meeting last week, so I wanted to highlight that specifically. Timeline moving forward, here we are, September 2025. We do anticipate KCHA applying for building permits this month. So the decision on whether we should modify our agreement and not proceed with the 10,000-square-foot Opportunity Center within this development, really want to make that now in order to reduce costs for our development partners. And we're looking at other council touchpoints on this timeline. October 2025, the city would like to issue an RFP or a Letter of Interest, really asking tenants who provide behavioral health services or medical/dental services if they're interested in locating in this space. We've done some informal canvassing of human service providers, but this would really allow us to assess who's really interested and who wants to start talking to us seriously about this space. As we look at spring in 2026, we would undergo condo agreements and acquisition process with KCHA. That would be something that would come back to council for a decision. And at the same time, that process of negotiating our condominium agreement and the purchase and sale agreement will help inform our lease and tenant agreements because that will help us refine what those costs are and set and establish rents. We do anticipate building permit issuance in May. Construction slated to begin in 2026. Pretty exciting after all these years of talking about the project, with an opening date slated for May of 2028. So again, direction needed tonight is whether the council agrees with the administration's recommendation to proceed with the acquisition process for the Opportunity Center, even though we have not currently identified a tenant or human services provider.
Thank you very much. And thank you for presenting all the options that you went through with the committee. That's super helpful. Councilwoman Mards, you're the Chair of Service Safety and Parks. Would you like to summarize the committee's recommendation on this item?
I can, but I think all my talking points were already in the presentation. But I, so yes, the committee did meet last Tuesday, August 26th, here in council chambers. And this was our only item that we discussed. I will say, just to clarify, maybe, as I said, all the points were already covered as to things we asked about. But I just want to say, there was, it's a bit of a fine point. There, well, two things, actually. One was that there were a couple of different opinions about one service provider versus multiple service providers. We had committee members who basically had a preference for one service provider, but were comfortable if multiple were needed. We had other committee members who were totally fine with multiple service providers. But there was a disagreement. There was a question about, with this being a lot of money, and the question that basically said, if we're going to spend a bunch of money, are we certain that this was the best option, best location for Human Services Campus? However, there was that question, but then all three of us did support the administration's position. So, you know, coming back tonight, if there are additional questions about the confidence, you know, the confidence that this is the best location and that all, you know, all options have been turned over and examined, differed in the debate. But in the end, all three of us chose to move forward with the administration's recommendation. Thank you for the opportunity to summarize.
Thank you for the summary. Does council have any questions? Councilwoman Reich?
Just a couple. They're kind of follow-ons. So thank you for the cost estimates, but they're estimates. When do you think we would be able to? When do we nail down the cost estimate? So we say, yes, here's the check for X dollars, and we get that for it.
That should occur in the spring. So let me go back to the timeline here. So we're going to begin working with KCHA on the condominium and purchase and sale agreement this winter. As they finish up those building designs, that is going to inform the final cost estimate. And that's when City Council will have the ability to either approve the purchase and sale agreement, continue negotiating, or reject the purchase and sale agreement.
Great. And so I'm kind of viewing this as two major risks. One is the cost risk, because we have an estimate, and we, you know, it's still an estimate, and tell purchase and sale agreement, great. And the other is the tenant risk, which is we don't have a tenant lined up, so we're kind of going in on spec. What are the plans or when do we feel like we will have a better sense of one tenant, multiple tenants, who it might be? Is that predicated on the RFP?
Yes.
I'm just really curious. How do we reduce that other dimension of risk?
Yes, that is the intent of the RFP or the Letter of Interest that we'd be requesting in October. So we would have a good idea of whether it is one tenant, whether it's multiple tenants, and the strength of that interest. And then we'd be able to proceed with the respondents and go over things like their finances, their ability to be a reliable and sustainable tenant as well. So that work would start in October once we receive responses and continue through the winter with, again, hopefully, a tenant lease agreement in the spring.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reich, Councilwoman Sheng?
Yeah, kind of adding on to that. So I'm curious if you have a sense of what the likelihood is of us finding tenants, like what, you know, there's a risk of us not finding tenants and we have a contingency plan. But like, what do you think is the chance that we have to go with that option?
Well, I think we have a couple of things that are on our side. One is, we've already done some canvassing of larger human service provider organizations, as I've said. And there is interest, even though the national funding environment and political environment is a little unsteady. There is still interest with these organizations to expand. And they're talking about it internally, how ready they can be. So we know that there's some interest and ability, even for a single-tenant option. There is, we have the ability to be flexible and get multiple tenants. We've heard from our community the need for space. We would need to identify providers that fit the funding model for these spaces. But we've heard a desire for space. So I think both of those things are going in the city's favor. And then finally, the timing of this. For organizations to anticipate a 2028 opening, this gives them time to plan. And so all of those things, I think, are going in our favor. Plus, what we've heard from our organizations that we've been talking to is the city has some funding to help assist and that they don't have to pay market-rate rents, that we can subsidize some of the upfront capital costs. All of these things are what human service organizations and nonprofits need in order to provide the service. And that's usually the hard part for them. And so I think it's very promising. There is always a risk. I can't sit here and tell you today there's not going to be a risk. But we have a lot of things going for us. And so I think it more likely that we at least have some space occupied when the center opens.
That makes sense. I'm curious, so you mentioned that the rents that we charter aren't going to be based on market rates. They'll be based on, you know, basically just cost recovery. Do you have a sense of, like, what amount of discount that would be relative to market rates at this point?
I do not.
I do not. I do not. Thank you. Other questions, Councilmember Zhang? No, looks like you're going to lay this off. Any other questions? And if there are none, I would ask if committee chair would like to make a motion.
I would, thank you. And I had it up in front of me, there you go. And I, indeed, I do. I move to proceed with the acquisition process for the commercial condo known as the Opportunity Center, part of the Transit Oriented Development TOD project to be constructed at 1550 Newport Way Northwest, to be used for community human services as outlined by the interlocal agreement between the city and King County Housing Authority.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Mertz, council president, deputy council president.
So for folks who don't know, this has been one of the longest community conversations, I think, in, certainly while I've been a resident here in Issaquah. You know, Hillside Park is like a blip in history compared to the, how long this conversation has been going on. You know, the new skate park, which isn't the new skate park anymore, was, you know, a blip in history compared to how long this conversation has been going on. How long has it been? It's been going on since before even I was on council. This was with turbocharged by a $1 million commitment from the Talis Development Project. We had been seeking out some way to provide the kind of services, or even something in the kind of ballpark of what the Together Center could do. And it was frustrating challenge after frustrating challenge after frustrating challenge after frustrating challenge of finding potential options and realizing it was just, for some reason, not quite right. But this has been going on for 17, 18 years. This need has been identified. Former council member John Rittenhouse spoke to us in committee about how important this was. He was one of the folks that was very active on this. Just lots of folks in the community. It was something that was also near and dear to former council member Winterstein, who was part of all that activity as well. It was, so when we identified this transit-oriented development project as an opportunity, we knew it was going to be a bunch of money. It's always looked like it was going to be a bunch of money. We got help from our friends in the state legislature when their help was needed. And so we moved forward many, many times. And so, you know, here we are, yet again, coming back to council, looking to reaffirm the wisdom of needing to provide these sorts of social services in our community. And I have stood with it for 16 years, and I'm going to stand with it today. I just, I'm excited to see some of these dates. It's never been closer, and hopefully, we can get out of this cycle of increased costs and increased costs. It is right and proper to ask what this will cost. It is right and proper to ask what we could do otherwise with the money. But this need has, there's just been an ironclad need, and I think the money is still reasonable compared to what we would get. And so I'm delighted to continue to move this forward tonight and hope the rest of my council members, fellow council members, will join me. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Council President, Councilmember Zhang, did you have yours up? Or not? Okay, Councilmember Hall, then council president.
I'm up next.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Mertz. And also, I do want to also thank Councilmember Ray. You know, the consideration about risk is always important, and I think you've raised important questions. However, I, and I think that Deputy City Administrator did an excellent job of talking about why this project can go. I'd like to add a couple of more reasons why I think the risk is actually quite low. And one is what we talked about earlier tonight, and that is that we have a staff that has demonstrated that they are creative and flexible and innovative. We just won a statewide award for it. And we talked about the roller rink project, and, you know, we do things that other cities don't do. It's been by history with this city that it's been a leader because it is willing to take risks, especially when there is a high return and benefit for the people that we are serving. And in this case, the, I want to go back to the original vision, which was, we will have a housing that will be serving low-income individuals. And we know from much history that those kinds of tenants are well-served when they are coupled up with direct access to human services. And so that was the model. That's the Together Center model. That's the model that we wanted to replicate here. And so it is really important for us to follow through on that vision. The city administrator sent all of us a Seattle Times article this week that talked about what happens when that essential support is not there. And there's a lot of empty, low-income housing in Seattle, partly because the people that need those social services are not receiving them. So here we have a model where we're placing this kind of a human services provider right next to a affordable housing complex. And I think that this will make it successful, and I think we need to stay the course on that vision. And so I too will be supporting this. I too have been involved with this project for a long, long time, even before it came before the city council, the Together Center was looking to expand here. And Councilmember Mertz, maybe you want to add in, at the Safety Services and Parks Committee, Councilmember Mertz did a really good job of talking about the kinds of assessments that were done before it even came to council. There was a long vetting process that we went through, trying to find locations that were suitable. And it's not easy. It's not easy. So we have this opportunity before us, and I will be supporting this opportunity center and vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe we're going to Councilmember Hall and then council president.
Thank you very much. I have kind of three groups of thoughts I'd like to share with the council. First, kind of an acknowledgement, like the others have said, of why we're here and kind of what it's taken to get here. Second, some concerns that I still have, and I really appreciate the Service Safety Parks conversation that you guys had. I listened to it on my way back from my road trip last week, and it was, it was good road trip listening, so I appreciate that. And then third, while I'll be voting in favor of the initiative tonight despite some of these concerns. So just starting at the top, I've been incredibly proud, like the others have said, to support this really ambitious project over the years that I've been on the council. That brings much-needed density, affordable housing, access to transit, and critical services in central Issaquah. In many ways, this is exactly the kind of project that we hope to see in central Issaquah. In many ways, it fits exactly the vision that many councils and strategic planning documents have envisioned for central Issaquah. And I say ambitious intentionally too, because I have no doubt that there are many a council and many a city that would have thrown in the towel by now. The challenges this project have experienced and continues to experience is really like nothing else I've experienced in my nearly six years on the council. So I just also want to share just a deep gratitude for Deputy City Administrator Snyder and other city staff who've shown real commitment and resourcefulness and tenacity.
Patience.
Exactly. I mean, all of the synonyms there. In the face of all these challenges all over the years, so anyways, just big appreciation for you. I still do have some concerns, and I think it's important to acknowledge them, especially because there are some potential outcomes here that are different than we'd originally intended. So I think the circumstances that we find ourselves in with tenants pulling out because of the environment and approaching permit deadline does make this decision feel a little bit rushed, just in my thinking. And I worry about a potential new scope without a full policy analysis, that was kind of mentioned a little bit in committee, of what our options are to address the underlying policy problem that we identified back when this all started. I guess in my mind, it seemed like the policy problem that we were trying to address in these years, and feel free anyone to kind of add on to this, was that Issaquah and East King County were deserts for low-income behavioral health, medical, and dental care, right? And so given the risks identified here, the question that keeps popping up in my head as I'm considering this is, do all of the potential outcomes, one tenant, multiple tenants, no tenants but human services staff, help to solve that problem statement that we originally crafted, right? So for example, would moving our human services staff into the condo space, which I think we can all acknowledge would solve a problem and be really good for the community, but would that solve the specific problem that we've identified? And if not, are there other options that could exist? And I'm imagining some policy analysis matrix with all the different options that solve our problem statement, or even things that we pull from the Human Services Strategic Plan that have been identified in our GAPS analysis already that solve the problem in other direct ways? Are they worth considering? Even if those options, as hard as it is to kind of dream, exist outside of this centralized onsite opportunity center model that we've been reaching for, even if they're completely different options like direct funding to these kinds of providers who provide resources and care for our residents that live here in Issaquah? And I think just given some of the financial risks, it's particularly important to just be able to say that regardless of any of the options, this is the best course of action. Like I kind of previewed at the beginning, given all that, I'm still going to support the proposal tonight for a handful of reasons. You can see I like lists. I'm comforted by the fact that staff are determined, really determined, to find tenants that meet our original intent and solve the problem that we clearly identified. And it sounds like there's actually some preliminary interest just from canvassing, which is great. I'm comforted by the fact that the location is attractive, that our plans to provide submarket rates or submarket rents is attractive, that our plans to provide assistance with tenant improvements is attractive to different human services providers. I also asked some questions earlier today, and it does seem like it would be possible to delay the opportunity center without delaying the building permits. But as you said during the presentation, that could also mean additional costs for KCHA. And I think we're all committed on this council to ensuring that nothing jeopardizes the larger housing project and the larger vision of this as well. And so to that point, I think what it comes down to for me is, you know, this is just one tool in the tool chest that we have, right? We all know that space for human service providers near those who need it is really hard to come by. So if we can't take the time to look into this kind of fuller range of other riskless options, if those even exist, available to us that directly address the problem we have identified, I feel like we can't let another tool, we can't let another opportunity go by us, even if it doesn't perfectly fit the mold of the problem statement we were trying to address in the beginning. And, you know, too, just thinking about this over the weekend, sometimes that's our job as policymakers, right? We weigh the risks, we ask for as much possible information as we can, and we have to make those kinds of tough decisions, even if we're not entirely sure if it's going to fit our original vision. So anyways, thanks for letting me ramble. That's just kind of where my head sits right now, and I'm going to support the motion tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall, council president.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion here and Councilmember Ray and Councilmember Zhang's questions about risk and Deputy City Administrator Snyder's response about the advantages of this site and our funding options and all of the relationships that we've made with human services providers that put us at an advantage even as we are sitting here without a signed-on provider. I am fully confident in our staff's ability to find service providers for this location, given the need in the community. And I just think this is a really excellent site. We know there is a lot of need and a lot of interest for being able to provide services. So I would like to see us move forward despite not having a single clear provider lined up. And I'm also fully on board with kind of our original needs analysis and the $3 million that the state provided that are tied to providing a location for that services. So I appreciate that this is brought to us, but for me, this is kind of a shrug of, that's the risk of doing business, and I am perfectly comfortable moving forward because the need is so great and our staff is so amazing at solving problems.
Any other comments? Councilmember Zhang?
Great. Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments so far. You know, I asked some questions about the risks of doing this. You know, we talked a lot about the reasons that we should be doing this. I think there's also risks of not moving forward with this project. There's many, which we've talked about in previous council meetings. Number one, we got a $3 million grant from the state to build the Opportunity Center, and it's been mentioned in the past, if we don't do what we said we were going to do after getting it reapproved by the state four times, that really loses us credibility in the eyes of our state legislators. We don't want to do that. So I think that alone is reason for us to move forward alongside, you know, this is a massive need in the community. Another thing is that, you know, one of the concerns with the development in central Issaquah is that the developments to date haven't really had, you know, ground floor amenities for the community. And so if we're not able to provide that in this development, which is our flagship development, that we're all, like, you know, this is the number one priority of the city, that's why Andrea spent hundreds of hours over many, many years making sure that this happens. If we, you know, if we're like, oh, actually, it was too difficult, so we're not even going to try, and instead it's just going to be live work units or resident amenities, what signal does that send to the rest of the development community about what we value in the city? So I think ultimately, you know, those reasons, I think those risks outweigh the risks of, you know, potentially having challenges with finding tenants. I'm sure it's going to be a challenge, but our staff has shown they're able to address these challenges. You know, other cities have also had some amount of challenges in finding tenants for commercial spaces and have worked through them, and I'm confident that our staff can find solutions to that as well. So for those reasons, I'm supporting this recommendation to proceed with the acquisition process tonight.
Thanks. Additional comments? Councilmember Joe?
Well, since everyone else has spoken, I guess I will talk a little bit. Councilmember Mertz talked about the $1 million that was secured from Talis, and it was a little before his time. It was actually during my time on council the first time back when. And we did that with a bit of idealism, a bit of, you know, we're not really sure what's going to happen with this, but we need that seed money. We need that process started, and we need the vision of moving forward with the ability to provide human services within walking distance, as Councilmember De Michelle points out, so that they can be linked together. That successful model has been shown to work. We're going to try to do it out here because we do have a little bit of a human services desert. So I'm fully in support of the direction that you're going tonight. And I do agree that our staff is well-equipped to have the imagination to find a tenant or tenants that can fill that space. And we, as a council, I believe, need to move forward with this and continue to have the opportunity for the Opportunity Center to show it can work and to show that it will flourish.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I will reread the original motion, but I do want to make sure it's entirely clear to the public that what you are voting today is to continue with the process. You have many more decisions, you have many more votes, and you will get a lot more data and information. So I appreciate the fact that you're talking about making sure this pencils out, that this makes sense and it doesn't become an albatross for our future administration and a future council to deal with because it was a big investment that didn't work out. So I like your optimism, and more information to come. If there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to proceed with the acquisition process for the commercial condo known as the Opportunity Center, part of the Transit Oriented Development Project to be constructed at 1550 Newport Way Northwest, to be used for community human services as outlined by the interlocal agreement between the city and the King County Housing Authority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven to no. And you've heard it many times, Deputy City Administrator, but many other cities and many other teams would have just folded their tent. And so we appreciate so much that you're still keeping the process going as all these different things are changing so frequently. Thank you very, very much. We're going to move to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Zhang. And this may be light tonight, just so the public knows, a lot of the committees that we do go to do not meet in the month of August, so we have fewer reports tonight. Councilmember Zhang?
No report from you tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. The LTAC Committee is scheduled to meet on the 15th of September at 2:00 p.m. Items for the agenda are still being worked out at this point. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting for the board meeting on the 24th of September, and the Cascade Water Alliance Public Affairs Committee meeting tomorrow has been canceled. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
My apologies, I have three reports.
Oh, what?
I'm sorry. One of them's quick. So Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, our next meeting is next Tuesday, a week from today, with COM 0109, the Title 18 Tree Code update on our agenda. I also just wanted to give a quick heads up to the council that our prioritization of the future Title 18 amendments, often called our Title 18 Whiteboard, is on Monday, I believe, the committee, the whole, is that right? So just make sure to set a time, set aside some time, whatever time you need to prepare for that exercise, and appreciate, appreciate your willingness to move forward with that. Eastside Fire and Rescue, the Fire Chief Ad Hoc Committee met on August 20th to review all of the semifinalist applications that came in. For Fire Chief, if you haven't seen, we have selected three finalists to go through the process. we have selected three finalists to go through the process. They are Will Aho, our Assistant Chief at Eastside Fire and Rescue, one of them, John Drake, a retired Deputy Chief with the Los Angeles City Fire Department, and Moke Sasaoka, the Assistant Chief with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. And you can find more information on the Eastside Fire and Rescue website if you'd like to read their bios. There will be a week from today on September 9th, there will be a week from today on September 9th, a candidate reception up at Samamish City Hall in their council chambers. If you're interested in joining, no need to RSVP, just show up to Samamish City Hall from 2:00 to 4:00, and you can meet them. The next day on September 10th, we're going to be pretty busy all day with panel interviews. Those panels are governmental, operations, administration, and community. And then the next day on September 11th, the board meeting, Tola and I and all the other members of the board will make our pick for the next Fire Chief for our entire service area. So very exciting. And then once we've done that, the board will give some direction for the next part, which is then negotiating a contract with our new Fire Chief. So let me know if you have any questions or want to be involved in that process at all. No report for RIA 8 Salmon Recovery Council. The Lake Samamish Coconee ILA Management Committee, we met with the full Lake Samamish Coconee Work Group on August 13th here at Tibbetts Creek Manor. Just specifically, the ILA Management Committee is just made up of the cities that help fund it. The actual work group, Coconee Work Group, is the scientists and fishery experts that do the work. We ran through our 2026 work plan, which we had adopted earlier in the summer. Lot of similar recovery, incubation, monitoring work, except we have added some new items I thought you might be interested in because it's Lake Samamish, and effectiveness, monitoring study of invasive aquatic vegetation treatment around the lake to see what works best. And then also, there is not a lot of good science of 6PPDQ, which is the tire residue runoff that comes in through stormwater into our different rivers and lakes and stuff, on the effect of 6PPDQ on Coconee specifically. So a study to kind of understand that in Lake Samamish. Also, you may not know, I certainly didn't know this, that Dairy Gold here in town has a well in a water system that supplies water to the fish hatchery, and it supports Coconee incubation at the hatchery. So that has had some problems in the past, and the ILA Management Committee sent a letter to WDFW, the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, that run the water system. They have replied eager to help, and we now have a task force of work group and DFW reps to collaborate and ensure that it doesn't happen again. We're feeling much better about future seasons' ability to have a reliable water supply that it just runs right over the Coconee eggs as they're incubating. Anyways, I can show you if you ever want to go inside the hatchery. It's interesting. I had no idea it was there. There was also, just a heads up to the council, there was also some noted concern by several work group members that Issaquah doesn't have a member of the King County Flood Control District. There are some questions that we're working through as to whether or not we actually have a permanency or not, so we're looking into that. But there's definitely interest in the Lake Samamish Coconee community of having an Issaquah representative either elected or staff in that work, in the King County Flood Control District.
Thank you for that reminder, Council President, and I've been working on that for four years. So we can get a seat on that, but we need to have somebody who can make those meeting times work for...
Is it like through SCA or something like that?
No, jurisdiction-wise.
But we do have an Issaquah seat.
We have an opportunity. It's not a dedicated seat.
Okay. Yeah, it seemed like some of the other actual Lake Samamish cities have a specific seat, so I thought it was kind of odd.
We do not have a vacant chair.
Yeah, that's very odd.
But we have an opportunity before us.
Yes, there is interest if anyone on the council is interested in stepping up and serving there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
No reports this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting Wednesday, September 10th at 7:00 PM in person at the Mercer Island Community and Events Center. I'm a big supporter of having that group meet physically, be physically present, so I'm excited. A number of important topics will be covered. There'll be a discussion on the King County Library System Levy, LID, LIFT update from King County Library System, a discussion on prepping for an upcoming discussion with King County Council regarding King County Transit District Sales Tax, and then potential action on an SCA draft letter to the Washington State Legislature on the indigent defense case standards. I talked about this, I think, at the last meeting. This is something that the city of Issaquah has considered important for many months. It would be, I have not seen a copy of the letter, but I believe it would ask for deferral of implementation of the standards until a Washington State-specific study has occurred to help frame this issue. It's also a request for funding. These municipalities, essentially all municipalities, feel that this will put an incredible burden, financial burden on municipalities. So that conversation will occur as well, so and I will report back the results of that conversation. Madam Mayor, do you have something to add on that?
No, you described it very perfectly, actually. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. So on August the 21st, the Board of the Eastside Human Services Forum unanimously voted to form a new organization with the Together Center and the Alliance of Eastside Agencies. The new organization will be dedicated to the benefit of all Eastside Human Services, including providers, community leaders, cities, school districts, hospitals, faith-based organizations, and others. The Together Center will convene a task force to plan for the creation and transition to a new entity, tentatively to occur in 2026. So this is something, just a couple of remarks about it. This is something that has been under discussion for at least three years. We've been exploring this through a lot of different meetings with Together Center and AEA, and for many similar reasons, that discussion has gone on. And about two and a half, three months ago, Together Center came forward with a formal proposal, and the AEA Board is voting on that, and this Board, the Eastside Human Services Forum, looked at it and considered it a very viable proposal, and so we voted to support it, and we will be moving forward. Together Center is currently, and they will be taking the lead, they would be the lead agency, they will be taking the lead and are currently scheduling a meeting of all three agencies to form a planning group that would begin to work out the details of this transition to a new organization. So if you have further questions, please talk to me, and that also goes for anyone listening online. I'm glad to answer any questions about this move forward. And then the only other announcement is September the 19th at 10 o'clock, the Joint Meeting of Transportation Boards is going to be held at Sound Transit Offices. So that's Eastside Transportation Partnership, Skateboard, and Seashore, and we will be meeting together. This is an annual event that's hosted by King County every year, and so this will be that annual event. It's usually a really good discussion that the three boards have when we get together. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I just have two quick reports. On Thursday, I have two meetings. First, the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board. We are recommending comprehensive plan certification for eight jurisdictions and conditional certification for two jurisdictions. So we'll see how the votes for those go. And then we will also have a discussion item on regional senators monitoring. As you know, we have a regional growth center. There is some concern that there has not been housing development in that area, and so that will be part of that discussion is figuring out how that designation will respond. On Thursday, I also have the King County Affordable Housing Committee meeting, and we will get a briefing on housing market pressures and shifting area median income in King County, which I know we have all seen. As much as we can provide, potential for affordable housing is the median income shifts that shifts where the need dynamics happen. And then we'll also review the preliminary draft of the 2026 state legislative agenda, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Mayor's Report, and there will not be an executive session. I'm dedicating the majority of my Mayor's Report tonight to my friend Susan Neville, who passed away in August. Susan was a founding member of Save Cougar Mountain, an advocacy group that influenced policy on land development in the city of Issaquah and raised community awareness and voices to preserve undeveloped forested land unsuitable for sustainable build-out. After almost the flat buildable land was developed in Issaquah, proposals started to be submitted to develop steep, wet, forested parcels on Cougar and Squawk Mountain. Susan and the Save Cougar Mountain Organization worked tirelessly for years to ensure the Issaquah City Council could find a pathway to purchase the Bergsma property on Cougar Mountain for the community and place it in conservation. It was a monumental effort. Susan and I first met around 2015 to discuss some development issues that she and her neighbors on Newport Way West had been experiencing. We met at her house with about 30 residents and neighbors, and we went through the ongoing projects and the impacts that they were experiencing. Susan was a rather quiet spoken person, but fierce in her commitment to ensure that development should be focused on buildable land that could support the scale of the project and that would be protective of the beautiful environment it was surrounded by. Her husband Tim and I recently spoke about her tenacity. If Susan wanted to ensure something was done, she was doggedly persistent in her pursuit of that goal. I am enormously grateful for the work of Susan and Save Cougar Mountain, who were able to present a scroll with over 10,000 signatures, encouraging the city council to find a path forward to fully purchase the entire Bergsma property, which the city council eventually did, with assistance from the Trust for Public Lands in King County and the state. Susan told me during one of our many, many coffee meetups that this kind of local advocacy work was all new to her and not exactly in her comfort zone. I've heard that from so many others over the years as well, as they put their toes in the water to try and influence policymaking and land use development in Issaquah in profound ways, and how they found the going long, hard, and uphill. But unlike most people, when the going got hard, Susan got more committed and drummed up more support. She led with passion and a heartfelt love for this community and its beautiful forested hillsides. A land acquisition of that scale takes an engaged and activated community, as council and the administration sought a path forward with a very complicated and ambitious funding strategy. Susan and Save Cougar Mountain's work was essential to getting it over the end line. They not only advocated for the council to move forward with the acquisition, but they also met with King County and other partner agencies to tell the story of why this partial should be conserved. I do not believe this acquisition would have moved forward without their stellar efforts. I will miss my friend, but I will never forget her due to that beautiful green forested slope on the northeast corner of Cougar Mountain that you see as you enter Issaquah from the west, that she so bravely and determinedly worked to muster a community to save it. Thank you, Susan, for all you have done for our community and for shaping the ways in which Issaquah can grow in a sustainable way without losing these beautiful forested forests. Truly be missed. Susan's memorial will be held in Seattle at St. Thomas Episcopal Church on Monday, September 15th at 1:30 PM. I will be attending and can provide transportation for any other council members who wish to attend. A couple of last items. You've heard earlier that culture and community connection are going to be front and center at Issaquah's Culture Fest, so join us for this fun, free, family event in celebration of Issaquah's rich cultural diversity. The festival brings our community together with a vibrant lineup of live performances, interactive art, hands-on communities, and delicious global eats, and it's all on the lawn of the Issaquah Community Center. There's a resource fair hosted by the City of Issaquah Human Services to connect with local organizations and help folks discover resources, celebrating what makes our community unique. The event starts on 5:30 on Friday, September 5th. I hope to see you there. A big, big excitement. After months of construction, the pedestrian park and senior center plazas are reopened to the public. These re-envisioned plazas will serve as a multi-generational hub where children, families, and seniors can all spend time together. Join me to celebrate these newly improved community spaces with a ribbon-cutting ceremony Monday, September 15th, 5:30. And that concludes the Mayor's Report. We are going to move to an informational update. ID 1909 is from Ashes to Action, Vega Valley's Resiliency Journey, and I'd like to invite Administrative Services Director Autumn Monahan to present this item, which has a very interesting name, so I'm sure you'll all be very curious. Welcome, Autumn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, g'day. Ha, ha, ha. Very grateful for your time this evening. Thank you for your interest and time as I share some lessons learned from my recent fellowship trip to Australia, where I studied Vega Valley Shire Council's inspiring resiliency journey following the Black Summer Fires of 2020. This is very timely, as Issaquah just had a wildfire very close to us on Friday. Thankfully, firefighters were able to contain the fire quickly, but it's a reminder, this is very much a hazard for our community. Apologies. Let me see if I can get my screen to... Apologies, one moment. Thank you. All right, apologies for that delay. So a bit of history on this fellowship. The International City and County Management Association, or ICMA, awards two of these fellowship trips each year to somewhere else in the world, and I was very lucky to be awarded one of them this year. My trip was completely funded through this fellowship, and I'm just so thankful for the professional and development experience that it offered. So in June, I spent two weeks with my host city in New South Wales, Australia, while close in... So I spent two weeks in New South Wales, Australia, with Vega Valley, while close to Issaquah as far as population. Actually, Vega Valley is about 190 times the size of Issaquah. Most of that is state and national parks. There are rural inland towns, farmland and bushland, and most of the industry in that area is dairy, retail, and tourism and accommodation. Here's just a photo, just, you'll see some, you'll see some really horrible photos here in this presentation, so I wanted to share one of how I will remember at Vega Valley in my trip. Really beautiful bushland, also right along the coast in Australia. So why did I travel across the world to Vega Valley to study with this wonderful community? And if you see in this timeline of incidents that have happened for this community, starting in 2018, they continually piled on each other. So you've got massive bushfires, consistent floods, they've had drought conditions, heat wave, and then you pile on the COVID-19 pandemic. These have all continually tested this community's resilience. The first major bushfire in that period started in March of 2018. I took this photo on a tour. It was started by a tree that hit a power line, and then we drove from that spot all the way to the coast to really track how the fire spread. It was... Thankfully, it looks more like the left picture now than the right, but these are just really dramatic before and after of how a fire can rip through a community. So still reeling from the bushfire, then the Shire was hit with the first of many floods, which you see on the left. They had gone from one disaster declaration to another, and then COVID hit. So it just completely compounded. This next graphic, and I encourage you to look at this a bit more in the report, it's quite complex, but really this is showing, at some point, there's a threshold where emergency management's capacity to manage all of these disasters is exceeded. You can see that there with that line where the green and the pink are popping up, where all of those different disasters really compounded to a point where the ability to manage it was exceeded. So Bega Valley is a very inspiring community and one that I'm so grateful to have visited and to know. Years later, they have always focused their value that people matter in their response, and that is grounded in everything that they do. And they have received national recognition for their response, and again, I'm really, really grateful that I was able to meet and learn from them during my trip. So once that bushfire hit in nineteen and twenty, the council had to really organize its recovery efforts. And so the leadership team stepped back and said, okay, we need to form a new internal team to just work on response. That included community health and well-being, rebuilding infrastructure, and economic development. So a majority of this team were the day-to-day employees, meaning they had to really temporarily backfill all sorts of day-to-day positions. You know, after the bomb cyclone, a lot of our staff were working on recovery efforts that lasted weeks. For some, it lasted months. For Bega Valley, it lasted years. And so that was a huge undertaking, especially for the HR department, to find temporary, you know, positions to really backfill that work. And that's all sorts of recruitment and hiring and support, and I sat with their HR director and just talked about that workload alone, as far as how to staff up in a recovery effort. Also, most of their employees lived in the area that was impacted by the bushfire. And so thinking through, you know, all of the emotional and social support they were providing their community, they also had to provide to their internal staff. So leveraging a model that they worked well in their Tothra Bush Fire, Bega Valley, with help from the state, opened up several bushfire recovery centers that served as these one-stop shops to support the community through resources. This is very similar to Isaguac's resilience hubs. So we had a lot of discussions about, it's amazing how many similarities are happening across the world, even in emergency management, and these centers were very, very helpful to Bega Valley in its response. As time went on, those centers did shutter, but they moved to more of a case manager program, where they had staff that were reaching out to members of the community and families to provide support on housing and homelessness, financial issues, the anxiety and trauma of the incident, and then the compounding impacts, of course, of COVID-19 on top of it. So half a year after the bushfires, about two thousand people in their community had registered for that service as far as working with a case manager. About a year later, eight case managers were still working with community members, so it was a very long-term effort. Along with those essential needs, Bega Valley also recognized the need for just community recovery, and so they were providing grants of up to $2,500 for community-led recovery activities that focused on social connection and resilience and health and well-being. In total, they gave out $54,000 to twenty-three meaningful events in their community. I met with Bega Valley's mayor, Russell Fitzpatrick, who really reflected on how important those events were, and it was anything from live music to writing workshops to even whale-watching tours. And having that moment for community members to have a moment of happiness after such a horrific incident really provided that emotional restoration that was needed for the community, which I just found really unique as far as a program to happen after. So this photo here that's featured is at the family fun day after the first anniversary of the bushfires. The Shire actually also operates a library. They were fascinated by the King County library system, as we shared a lot about the differences and similarities of our government. They operate their own library, so they also had librarians who were cultivating collections that case managers could use to hand out books of just how to do repair work on your home or how to apply for grants. I had some time to go look through that collection and pulled a few actual, these are books that are part of their collection of artwork from children that really just spoke to me around processing trauma and how the community was going through that, even with a very young age. So five years post-disaster, Bega Valley continues to demonstrate the importance of using trauma-informed communication with the community. And as a communications nerd, you know, I copied all of these. I was, I was really impressed and amazed with how much they understood that processing trauma is different for everyone and that timeline is different, and they did an excellent job in that communication and still do five years later. Speaking of processing what happened, I was also honored to visit, it's almost completed, it's called the Corbago Bushfire Resilience Center. So this space is absolutely beautiful. It'll open here in a few months. It includes a theater, an exhibition space, a commemorative courtyard, which you see there on the left, and even a street-side cafe and shop. And this will be a place for the community go-to for decades to come to reflect on what happened during the Black Summer Bushfires. And amazingly, too, this is also going to be a catalyst for their main street as far as their economic development recovery efforts. So everyone's quite excited to open this center up in Corbago. Next up, providing easy, trusted, and transparent ways for folks to provide donations after an incident is essential. Mayor Fitzpatrick shared a story with me that a very popular Australian comedian amazingly raised fifty million dollars after the bushfires and donated it to the Rural Fire Service. Come to find out, the Rural Fire Service could only use those donations for equipment, training, and administrative costs. So none of that money actually went to support directly, you know, directly supporting the victims. So being really purposeful in how you fundraise, how you collect that money, and how it's distributed is really important. Donation management was also a lesson learned during the Tothra Bush Fire. When they created a mayoral bushfire relief fund, that raised 1.6 million dollars in that first fire. However, those donations only went to that specific incident. So when the Black Summer Fires happened soon after, the council decided to then create more of a perpetual community disaster relief fund. They partnered with a local nonprofit to make sure that those donations were then tax-deductible for those who were donating. The council or the city provided the in-kind support and administration for that fund, and it's governed by a board that includes members of the council as well as community members and nonprofit representatives. They make those decisions on how to award the funds. So after the Black Summer Fires, that money went toward things like fresh food hampers, the replacement of household items that people lost, the delivery of mental health programs, storage units for those who lost their homes, and even a tool library for folks to share their tools. So this fund now remains active and open in Bega Valley to support future community needs and disasters. I was thankful that I got to actually join one of the committee meetings as they were brainstorming how they were going to continually raise funds, preparing for the next disaster. Turning now to infrastructure, since 2018, the Bega Valley has created a disaster recovery team. It's about six or seven consultants that have specialty in project management and engineering. They have not, they've not ran out of work since 2018, this separate consultant group. And they're focusing on not only emergency repairs, but much larger infrastructure projects for the council. And again, this has not subsided both through the bushfires and all of the floods that have impacted that community. Speaking of infrastructure, I think one of my biggest takeaways, and what was very fascinating, was the idea of betterment. And, you know, as a community that's facing increased frequency and intensity of disasters, they're really focused on the idea of recovery efforts, not just replacing, you know, what was lost, but how to improve it for next time. And so they're doing some innovative work with a national science agency in Australia to leverage a evidence-based tool that will help them, as a council, make decisions on their future resilience improvements, which is fascinating. The key challenge to all of this, though, is money, and most of the funds that this council receives are state and federal dollars, and those are typically restricted to recovery and not to the idea of betterment. In fact, only three percent of the natural disaster funding spent in Australia is on mitigation, and ninety-seven percent is just in recovery. So it is an uphill battle, but one that Bega Valley is very much a leader on. And then this next slide, you'll see onto the left, there's that little bump on that step, and that's the idea that building that resilience then also builds a community's capacity to really cope with future impending disasters. So it's that extra bump for communities. The goal of betterment was top of mind for the council in many ways following the bushfires. They operate several landfills, and this is one that I visited as part of my time there. The amount of waste and disposal needs were very intense after the bushfires. So you've got four hundred and sixty-seven homes, a lot of them had asbestos waste. They immediately had to figure out how to build an emergency cell to take on all of that waste. Immense pressure, stories of immense pressure around building that cell and getting it ready. But they also worked on betterment. They improved the roads toward that landfill and opened up another space that would just be used for emergency waste. So once they opened that landfill, twenty trucks were coming in every hour with debris, and typically they get twenty trucks in a day. So the need was huge. So this emergency cell is now sealed and revegetated. Actually, during my stay and tour, this is where I saw most of the kangaroos, was on this emergency cell. But this is prepared and ready now for accepting waste in the future, and so this is now designated as their emergency cell for that reason. Water was another challenge during the bushfires. The Shire was using a one-step chlorination process, and so all of the catchment area for the council's water supply was heavily damaged. So significant drop in water quality, they were on boiled water notices for months and months. Thankfully, they now have some new facilities, including a close to $21 million treatment plant through a state grant and also some local funds to provide reliable water in the future. We can skip to the next slide. Meanwhile, there were, as I've mentioned, a lot of homes destroyed in the bushfires, and this only exacerbated this community's housing crisis. So within two years after the fires, only thirty-four homes had been rebuilt. Seventy-eight were also approved for development. Many community members decided to stay on their land, but instead live in tiny homes or caravans or pods or sheds, many, many different types. Often, these did not also provide any basic, you know, necessities like running water or a shower or a toilet. The State of New South Wales does not recognize many of these tiny homes as legitimate housing types, which has left Bega Valley in a very interesting situation as a local agency that should be enforcing these rules, but a community who has a whole lot of questions around that. So here's an article that just dropped right before my visit in Bega Valley. Five years later, their community is still dealing with this issue, and it was very much a hot topic during my stay. So we talked a bit about infrastructure improvements. There's also private development, and as that remodeling takes place, ensuring that there's also betterment happening on private property. So development in bushfire-prone land requires additional mitigation in that area. The government has created the Bushfire Attack Levels, or BALs, which factor in the type and proximity of vegetation, landslide, several other things that are quite fascinating to get to that level, to then determine what kind of mitigations required for new development, like larger setbacks or water retention on-site, or the use of fire-resistant building materials. So this next picture here, this, I took this picture, this is a new home in Bega Valley that is very, very close to that bushfire area with a high BAL. Bega Valley is one of the few places in the state that employs a full FTE, called a Bushfire Planning and Assessment Officer, and his tour was my favorite. It was really cool to see the improvements made in the community that make this area more resilient. He reviews development applications, he reviews the BALs, and then verifies and ultimately permits the construction in the bushfire-prone areas. Along with government, there's also community efforts made to build resiliency. So here's another example in Corbago. This is a small town that are leveraging grants to build and design their own renewable microgrid, so that would provide energy security during the next disaster. Just really quickly on economic development, so this is a community heavily reliant on tourism, retail, and agriculture, so the bushfires had a significant impact on their local economy. Bega took a very coordinated, multi-layered approach, including financial support, professional guidance, and then storytelling. And in my next slide, the Stories of Change is a webpage that I can share with all of you that has really awesome videos that do a great job in doing some storytelling on what was provided as far as support for local businesses and then how they were able to come back and be more resilient in the local economy. So I did a lot of presenting as well at Bega Valley. Here's a picture of me with their city council after I presented to them. They had a keen interest in Isaguac. If you see behind us, there is a map of Talis behind us. They, they wanted to talk a lot about the proximity of our built environment to our open space. They were fascinated, and so we had a lot of really spirited discussion and time together that was super valuable. Those council members had clear advice for our council members and for our community, especially one that's not been impacted in such a way by wildfire, and that is that community and education should be our number-one focus. So to that end, you know, they, and these council members said, as they work and talk to community members who've elected them, and most say, oh, yeah, I'm prepared, or, oh, I mean, you know, I lived through this incident or that incident, work on an exercise around a what-if. So, okay, so you say you're prepared. So would you stay or would you leave if there was an advisory to evacuate? Okay, you're going to stay. So what happens if your water service stops, and it stops for months? Okay, well, you've got water on site. Okay, well, what if your power is out? And your power is out for months, and how are you able to pump that water? Or what if you are alone for days and emergency management isn't coming in a very, very huge incident? So keep asking the what-if, and at some point, the community member goes, all right, I do have work to do. And so I found that quite interesting, and that's an exercise that several of the council members use in talking with community members even now as they advocate for preparedness. So our team has been doing a lot, and our emergency manager, Jared Schneider, had presented this to you a few months ago, our work around education and outreach. We've been partnering with Eastside Fire and Rescue on some community events around wildfire. We've updated a lot of our webpages, we've created some preparedness videos, and right now focused on a social media campaign on increasing the subscriptions to Alert King County, which is our alerting system for emergencies. I'm really thankful for our communications team, Quick Thinking, on Friday, as we were doing outreach around the wildfire that was active on Friday morning. Soon after, we then promoted, hey, next time, why don't you sign up so that you get alerts? And we had eight hundred and twenty-eight clicks from Friday till today, just on that kind of promotion. So it's really, really key to recognize those moments when you have the community member's attention and ask them to take action, so that was really good news. So just a few takeaways from my trip. Again, continuous education and... So what happens if your water service stops and it stops for months? Okay, well, you've got water on-site. Okay, well, what if your power is out? And your power is out for months, and how are you able to pump that water? Or what if you are alone for days and emergency management isn't coming in a very, very huge incident? So keep asking the what-if, and at some point, the community member goes, all right, I do have work to do. And so I found that quite interesting, and that's an exercise that several of the council members use in talking with community members even now as they advocate for preparedness. So our team has been doing a lot, and our emergency manager, Jared Schneider, had presented this to you a few months ago, our work around education and outreach. We've been partnering with Eastside Fire and Rescue on some community events around wildfire. We've updated a lot of our webpages. We've created some preparedness videos. And right now, focused on a social media campaign on increasing the subscriptions to Alert King County, which is our alerting system for emergencies. I'm really thankful for our communications team, Quick Thinking, on Friday, as we were doing outreach around the wildfire that was active on Friday morning. Soon after, we then promoted, hey, next time, why don't you sign up so that you get alerts? And we had 828 clicks from Friday till today just on that kind of promotion. So it's really, really key to recognize those moments when you have the community member's attention and ask them to take action. So that was really good news. So just a few takeaways from my trip. Again, continuous education and outreach is key and was the number-one guidance from the council. Organizing a recovery fund ahead of time is really intriguing to me, and the idea that we're better prepared for accepting donations and having a way to then distribute those to those who need it the most. Making a plan for business continuity for long-term staffing, like I mentioned, you know, we were able to manage after the bomb cyclone, but imagine a years-long recovery process. You need a long-term business continuity plan for city hall operations. Encouraging resilient development, both private and public, and then leveraging any betterment opportunities. So as we're making improvements to our community, how can we make sure that we are also more resilient to our hazards? And then just a reminder that recovery takes years, and it's something that I witnessed even five years later, is very much happening in Biga Valley. So with that, thank you for taking the time, especially late on a nighttime meeting, to really hear about my trip. And I just also want to say thank you professionally. It was a wonderful experience. Here's a photo of me with their senior leadership team. So I got to also attend a whole lot of staff meetings and learn about their local government, which was fascinating for both of us to share how we do business. So thank you. With that, I can answer any questions.
Great. Well, congratulations on getting the fellowship and bringing all this back to us. Any questions for Autumn, Deputy Council President?
Thanks, Autumn. That was fantastic. I was at the AWC conference, and we got to hear from Medical Lake and I think it's Walton is the name of the other city where they had, you know, major housing losses. And the mayor of Medical Lake said something along the line of, we started working on recovery as soon as the fire started. And I'm thinking from this presentation, we start working on recovery well before the fire starts. And like you said in your presentation, neither of those cities had any planning in advance for a possible wildfire. And so again, getting ready for these events is so important. I recently read a book called Fire Weather, which is about the Alberta fires. Excellent book. I recommend, I've been recommending it to everybody. But in there, he describes what a modern fire is like, which is different from the fires we've experienced in the past. And there's an explosive effect, and so they travel really rapidly. So the part that you were talking about in terms of behavioral health, luckily in the Alberta fire, they didn't lose a single person. They also didn't plan. I mean, it was a miracle that nobody died. But he talks about the thousands of people who were suffering from PTSD following that event because of the violent nature of these modern fires that we're experiencing. So getting ready for all of that is not something you do on the fly. Yeah, and so I think this was a really important trip for you and a really important trip for us. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, DCP. Any other comments? Councilmember Hall?
Just a quick question, doesn't even have to be answered tonight, too, but the bushfire attack levels thing was super interesting to me. I'm just curious if there's some state or federal analog here that code is based on.
Not to my knowledge, that's similar to the way that the BILs work in Australia. It was fascinating. And like I said, it was my favorite day, spending time with the person that, you know, assesses the development proposals. I can send you plenty of information on BILs, too. It's, yeah, it's great.
Any other comments or questions? Well, Autumn, again, thank you and congratulations. It's great that you got to go. So we're going to move into our last item of business this evening, which is Good of the Order. And Council President, you wanted to make a motion?
I actually have two items for Good of the Order. The first, which I'd written down even before the presentation, was just a really big thank you to Eastside Fire and Rescue for the intensely quick containment and suppression of the wildfire. I'm up in the Highlands, and it woke us up with just the intense smoke with our windows open. And so knowing that our, you know, fire department staff had people there not only to do that immediate containment, but also to watch that area and make sure that it would not recombust over the weekend was just really quite a reminder, and so I wanted to say a quick thank you there. But for the second item, I did want to give notice that at the September 15 council meeting, so our next council meeting, I plan to make an amendment to Resolution Number 2025-16, renaming the East Sunset Way Trailhead in order to change the proposed name from the Bill Ramos Trailhead to the Senator Bill Ramos Memorial Trailhead, and request that this item be added to the agenda. So tonight, I think we just need a majority vote on that item, whether to add it to a future agenda, but not really a debate on the idea itself.
Great. It's just to move it to put it on the agenda for discussion, and it needs a council vote. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Speaker Joe? Oh, sorry. Saw the microphone move. Okay, so the motion is to add an amendment to Resolution Number 2025-16, renaming the East Sunset Way Trailhead in order to...
Change to the proposed name from the Bill Ramos Trailhead to the Senator Bill Ramos Memorial Trailhead.
To the September 15 agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. The next item of business is upcoming meeting. Well, actually, I have one item for Good of the Order, too. I think Wally gave, the city administrator might have given a heads-up on it, I'm not sure. Sun Transit had a meeting last week, and there's a lot of press right now on a process that they're going to go through in 2026 to recalculate what they believe the true projects costs are based on the way they used to estimate construction projects to actually going back and looking at projects they constructed. And so in all likelihood, it's going to mean some recommendations to Sun Transit III projects. And as everybody knows, the design of the station in Isaguas is in the same package. I just want the council to think about a couple of things. We have, you know, an over 1,000-acre area in central Isaguas that densities tie into transportation modes and over-under crossing. And so when those elements may or may not come through, we have to have backup plans. And so the goal, I would think, for our city is to make the best-case assumption, which is that things will go forward as scheduled, but also begin to have conversations with the what-ifs, so setting the ceiling and setting the floor. And we have staff member Thomas Valdries working on that, and there's going to just be a lot of interest, especially for those projects that are at the back end of the ST3 package as to whether or not they will, dates will change, types of projects will change. And so we will be monitoring it, paying attention, coming back, but it also means we, as a community, need to be thinking about our land use, our transportation projects that are listed in the environmental impact statement for central Isaguas, and plan for the what-ifs because things change. Sometimes they don't, sometimes they do. So I just wanted to let you know about that. It was a very interesting meeting. There are some upcoming council meetings, the Committee of the Whole on Monday, September 8, and the anticipated agenda items include prioritization of future Title 18 amendments. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, September 15, and prior to the meeting, there'll be a ribbon-cutting for pedestrian parks and senior center plaza. At the 7:00 PM regular meeting, anticipated agenda items include public safety and civic facilities task force report, public safety sales tax, informational update on permit process improvements, informational update on report on municipal building decarbonization analysis. There's no executive session tonight, so there being no further business, we are adjourned at 9:20. Thanks.